So I'll call our special board meeting order. We'll begin with a pledge led by Councilperson. Chris Lynn, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember John Casey.
Present.
Councilmember Terrence Finelli.
Present.
Councilmember Adeline Rudolph here. Councilmember David Sauter.
Present.
Supervisor Jared Simpson.
Present. Chris Lynn, can you confirm the medium is properly advertised?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. And as this is a special meeting, we don't celebrate birthdays on special meetings, so we don't have any birthdays at this time. The correspondence binder is on the table behind me for correspondence up to this point. We do have a privilege of the floor before we get into some of our business for the meetings. Anyone who'd like to be heard at this time? Yeah, and if anyone online would like to speak at a privilege of the floor, you have the same rights as people in person. You get three minutes. And all you have to do to be recognized is raise your hand with the raised hand button on the school. And the zoom link. I know, not very square. Okay. So enough to any hands at this time. We do have a few items about priority business, some that are on the agenda, but some that are not. Now, the first one is a review of legal questions pertaining to the adjustment in terms of supervisor salary and responsibilities without a mandatory referendum. I refer to our attorney to present that and how he would recommend that we go forward in that matter.
My understanding is that there are multiple board members who would like to discuss certain aspects of the memorandum I've provided. And the, which I labeled attorney-client communication, privileged and confidential. And I understand that an executive session will be called for. I think that's appropriate.
So is there anyone who would like to go into executive session at this time to discuss this matter? Okay. So are we appropriate to discuss this in the open? Yes, I think the intent is having an open. So the. So I think the intent from that reaction was that we want to open that there's a request.
I think that's exactly what that is.
So. Do you want it?
No, I have it with me. Thank you. And I think that's appropriate. This should be discussed in. In an open manner. Want to see me while I'm talking?
You need to go in that room over there.
After Supervisor Menakats spoke before the board on October 16th, this board asked me to look into the, the issues she raised. And review the cases she provided. I did that. I researched with town staff and reviewed meeting minutes from 2017 and 2016. And reviewed the law on creating a town manager position. Transferring authority of an elected official to a town manager. And reducing a town elected official's salary during that elected official's term of office. From a factual standpoint. What I discovered was what I knew from having been here at the time. As well as I think everybody knows, in 2017, the town board created the position of town manager. By local law number one of 2017. And that law took effect upon filing with the New York State Secretary of State on March 16th, 2017. That law was allowed to be adopted by New York State Town Law, Section 58. And Section 58 dash A. 58 says a town may create the position. And Section 58A says the town manager shall be the chief administrative officer. And given such duties as may be prescribed by local law. At the end of Section 58A. There is a sentence that I'm about to read to you. It says, "Subject to the provisions of Section 23 and 24 of the Municipal Home Rule Law." "The town board may also, by local law." "By local law." "Grant or transfer to such town manager powers and duties held by elected officials of the town." "If the town board had included in local law number one of 2017." "That the town manager shall preside at town board meetings." "They could have done so." "But there would be a mandatory referendum pursuant to municipal home rule law." It's important to understand that the town board did not do that. The. Powers and duties that were prescribed in local law number one of 2017 for the town manager. Did not include any powers and duties of an elected official. As you can see in the memorandum I prepared. I went through each and every power and duty of a town supervisor prescribed in New York State Town Law. There's. Close to 20 of them. And on the right-hand side, I did a little analysis. Has this ever been transferred? Or curtailed by a town law passed by the Canadago Town Board? Not, has this been delegated? That's not the standard set in New York State Town Law. It's, has, has a local law been passed that transfers or curtails this power or duty? And my conclusion after researching, talking with town staff, is that no such local law has been. Ever passed by the town, town board. As you see in the analysis, though. It's not just has it been transferred. Is it, is it exercised? Interestingly. The town supervisor is also the town fire control officer. Able to call up active bodied individuals in the town. If there is a forest fire or a muck fire that needs to be fought. If they don't come when called and they're able-bodied, the town shall charge them a $20 fine. No town supervisor, to my knowledge, has ever exercised this duty. Does that mean it has been abolished, curtailed, or transferred to somebody else? No, it does not mean that. I can go through each and every one of the powers and duties if you'd like. But I think they're for the most part self-explanatory.
Can you just list them, please?
One, well, and these are not, these are all different. Sections of law, most in Section 29 of New York State Town Law. "Shall act as treasurer and shall demand, collect, receive, and have care and custody of monies." "Belonging to or due the town from every source except as otherwise provided by law." Now, in Canandaigua, the fees paid to the town are generally collected by our town clerk. Who then puts them in her own account. And then pays that by check to the town of Canandaigua. With a cover sheet explaining the fees collected, which is then sound, signed by our town supervisor. And deposited into the town's operating account. Two, shall deposit and secure in his name as supervisor, all such monies. Now, what that would mean is the bank account for the town would be. Jared Simpson as town supervisor of the town of Canandaigua. In recent memory, I don't think any supervisor has done that. But that doesn't mean that that power or duty has been transferred or abolished. It just means that our town supervisor and his immediate predecessors have not exercised that. That power and duty. I don't think they would want to. Three, shall disperse such monies only by checks payable to the person or persons entitled thereto. Which checks shall, if the town board requires such counter-signature, be countersigned by the town clerk. When authorized by resolution of the town board. Such checks may be signed with the facsimile signature of the supervisor or other town officer whose signature is required. The town supervisor is one of the three signatories on town checking accounts. Other than the town clerks and the town justices. Any check greater than $5,000 must have two signatures. And that's a resolution that the town board passes annually. That's not a local law transferring, abolishing, or curtailing the powers and duties of the supervisor. That's just the way we do things. It's different than a local law that would then require a mandatory referendum. The supervisor does sign all the checks and expenditures off on, he signs off on the audit. As well as payment of sureties. The town has forms that, that deal with that. Four, shall keep an accurate and complete account of the receipt and dispersment of all monies. Which shall come into his hands by virtue of his office in books of account in the form prescribed by the state. I think all the board members understand how we deal, how we handle finances in, in Canandaigua. I can go further into any of these if you'd like. We then skip. Five and six, for some reason, they're not in town, New York State Town Law. Seven, shall pay fixed salaries. Eight, shall prosecute in the name of the town for all penalties given by law to such town. For its use and for all monies or property due the town. Generally code enforcement officer and/or a town attorney prosecute code violations. I've always thought of it as an implied authority of the supervisor. Either way, there's no local law requiring that it be the code enforcement officer and/or the town attorney. And any of our town supervisors could have stepped in and have. On occasion said, hey, I want this, you know, let's, let's pursue this. Nine, shall cause a survey to be made of the bounds of the town whenever required by the State Department of Transportation. Ten, shall prepare an annual financial report for filing with the town clerk. Eleven, shall lease, sell, and convey in the name of the town. Property owned by it whenever and in the manner authorized by the provisions of this chapter. This is one included, oh, and it includes the grant of easements for other rights and land. I cited an example earlier last week. The town board passed a resolution granting access easement over land that the town owns. And the resolution said the town supervisor is authorized and directed to execute the access easement. And when I prepared the access easement, I put a line for Jared Simpson, town supervisor. Twelve is the superintendent of fires. Thirteen, notifying the Department of Transportation regarding the construction or repair of any dam, dock, pier, or wharf. Fourteen, attend the annual board meeting of the supervisors of the county. And every regular adjourned or special meeting thereof. Town supervisor in our town does do. Fifteen, may designate a bookkeeper or confidential secretary or both. A person so designated shall receive a reasonable compensation for his services. To be fixed by the town board and such compensation shall be a town charge. Sixteen. Shall have and exercise any other power or duty expressly conferred or imposed upon him by law. And such powers and duties of administration and supervision of town or special or improvement district functions. As shall be provided by resolution of the town board to be performed on behalf of such board. Town Law Section 42 provides that the supervisor shall appoint a deputy supervisor. Town Law 63 provides that the supervisor shall preside at meetings of the town board. Town Law Section 103. Provides that the supervisor shall be the budget officer. And then the next phrase says, "Provided that the supervisor may appoint." "To serve at his pleasure." "Any person, including a town officer or employee." "Other than a member of the town board to be a budget officer." "In the event of a vacancy, the supervisor shall serve until another person is appointed as budget officer." Those are all the supervisor powers and duties that are provided in New York State Town Law. Now. It is my conclusion, my legal confusion, conclusion and advice. That the town board in February of 2017 legally. And properly enacted local law number one of 2017. And that no mandatory referendum was required pursuant to municipal home rule, rural law, Section 23 or 24. Because none of the powers and duties of the supervisor were transferred to the town manager position. And we know that. Because of what the town manager position, local law number one of 2017. Which is now Chapter 69 of our town code. Provides for as the duties of the town manager. One of those says that. Interestingly. Of Section Q says the town manager shall make preliminary review of budget requests. And make recommendations concerning them to the town board. The manager may be appointed the town budget officer by the town supervisor. In accordance with New York State Town Law, Section 103 subdivision two. To my knowledge, that's happened every year since we've had a town manager. Each supervisor is designated Mr. Finch, our budget officer. But did not have to. And was acting within accordance with New York State Town Law when he or she did so. Moving on to the salary reduction issue. In 2017. New York State Municipal Home Rule Law, Section 23, 2E. Requires a mandatory referendum for any local law. That reduces the salary of an elective office, officer during his term of office. Now. On January 9 of 2017. The town board of the town of Canandaigua appointed Deputy Deputy Supervisor Greg Westbrook. As interim supervisor. And Mr. Finelli's motion to do so specifically stated for the term ending December 31, 2017. That motion was seconded and passed. Now, in 2016, the town board set the salary for the position of town supervisor. In the 2017 budget at $56,000. For the remainder of interim supervisor Westbrook's term until December 31, 2017. The town of Canandaigua paid supervisor Westbrook $56,000. My understanding is that he donated a portion of that back. That's irrelevant for the question of whether or not the town needed a mandatory referendum. They did not because they did not reduce the salary. In this matter. I've concluded my legal advice is that the town board acted in accordance with New York State Town Law and its own procedures. And did not require a mandatory referendum for any action taken regarding the supervisor's salary in 2017. I am not concerned about liability to the town after reviewing the facts and the law on these matters. I don't believe there are any aggrieved parties, especially on the supervisor matter. Or the salary matter, excuse me. Who could bring a suit, and if they did, they would not prevail. Any questions?
What was the salary in 2018?
Less, 20, 20,000, I believe.
So how, how could the town board reduce it then?
Because the term. Was over.
Oh, I see.
So my understanding is they. Passed a budget. Which in October probably of 2017, they had $20,000 line item instead of 56. And then, as every town board does, set the salary for the supervisor at its January organizational meeting. The budget is a placeholder. There's so much money we're going to have in this column on this line. For whatever the, the matter is, your salaries, the supervisor's salary. The town clerk staff, any staff. And then salaries are actually set. At the, at your first meeting in January. So I believe the first meeting in January was when the salary was actually set.
It's my recall. The only one on board now was there then. You and I dug with your portion, but. That's how it was done and you're correct, Greg did donate a significant portion of the salary back to the town. And actually. That is, that was one of the factors used in determining what their future salary would be for the next supervisor.
Any other questions I can answer?
Any other questions from the board? All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for looking into that. And thanks, Chris, for doing that for us. All right. I do, before we get to the continued budget discussion for priority business, I do have a couple of items of concern that I wanted to bring up. One, at a prior board meeting. Our town manager had said that he wasn't getting communication from hazard mitigate, hazard mitigation plan and other things from the county, which. I was frustrated at that because. We should all be getting the communication. So I looked back and I met with the county and I asked them what was happening. And why those weren't being sent to the town manager and other people and staff. And it turns out they pulled, we looked up the emails. And it had been sent to the manager, the highway and water superintendent, planner, and the clerk. So they were on the subsequent, on the email list. So the county didn't drop the ball in sending those. I don't know where they ended up. They could have ended up in spam or other places. But. I just wanted to clarify that. I did follow up to make sure that we were getting all the communications from the county that we were supposed to, and it appears, and it appears that we have been. I also received a question from another, another supervisor asking about our planner position. And this came up, this was brought up, I think, a couple of weeks ago in some of our discussions. So he, he asked. How we went about the process of appointing our planner. And was concerned with, with the way that was happening. So I did, I did a little bit of research because of, of what he asked. I reached out to the county. I reached out to the county, to the county human resources. And I said, are our planners okay? Has everybody been appointed appropriately? And they don't have any record of us having any planners on the county files. So there are no people named as town planner for Ontario County. I asked, I said, how does it typically work? So part one of creating a position. At the county, the county reviews a position. If we want to create a position, the county reviews it and they see if there's anybody who could fit that position. There's any position already existing. And then they say, yep, this person fits in that position. That's your civil service. That's how you do it. Or they say, no, we don't have it. Work together, create a position, salary, find comparable, so then they create the position. That was, we didn't have to do that in this case. Part two of the town board creates the position by resolution. So that resolution has to happen. And in this case, we did create the resolution. We did appoint people to the planner position. Part three, the required paperwork should be sent to the county. And again, they don't have that. So my concern is, and I asked, why is this an issue? And it came back that this could open us up potentially for legal problems. Because if there are people in positions who aren't, the county doesn't audit. So they check who's in the position and then they check the payroll and make sure that people are being paid accordingly. So there's a, there's a second set of eyes to make sure the tax payer money isn't spent inappropriately. The worst-case scenario, we're paying people for positions that they're not qualified for. And then the town and myself, I would be liable. Best-case scenario, which I, I'm sure that's where we are, is that we just need to get the paperwork filed and taken care of. So I just wanted to share that. I am going to invite Michelle. From Ontario County to do a presentation on the HR process. So everybody's up to speed. So we don't, so, so we know what is happening and we know what the, what the protocol should be. Because the last thing that we want to do is open ourselves up for liability of the town. So. I think we need to make sure that we get those. Get those filed and get those in. So we legally have that and we're legally covered by that. So that is. The other piece of priority business that I had. Now on to continue budget discussion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to reduce the budget line for the supervisor's salary from $94,000 to $68,873. And return the excess amount to reduce the total tax levy to the taxpayers. The $68,873 number reflects what Supervisor Helling's salary would have been today. If we had continued to give our customary 3% raises each year from 2017 onward. The reason I feel this is fair is that as former Supervisor Menakats brought up, when the town reduces the supervisor's salary during their term of office, a public referendum is required. It appears that that law may not have been violated, as was just noted, noted by our town attorney. Because Supervisor Westbrook donated a portion of his salary until he was elected as supervisor in 2018 and his salary was officially reduced. While this process may not have violated the law, it does appear to have bypassed the spirit of the law, which is to allow the public to have their direct input. When a major change of government occurs. What's missing in this entire process is the lack of public input. When we changed to a manager council form of government in 2017. While public hearings were held and the public did speak during privilege of the floor. I doubt many of the conversations and the controversy that we're still having six years later would need to happen. If we'd followed that spirit and held the public referendum when we changed the supervisor's salary six years ago. Had this referendum occurred, we would know what the entire voting public felt was the best way forward for our town. To that end, I think the best answer here is to restore the supervisor's salary to its original level. Inflation adjusted for almost seven years since Senator Helling left that office. And since we switched to this manager council form of government, the last two supervisors have continued to work approximately full-time hours in their position. While still needing to work in other jobs to support their families. I don't see it as fair that other supervisors in our area are paid for their time. And our Canandaigua town supervisor is expected to essentially donate many hours of their work back to the town. Restoring a salary to $68,873 will also allow us to restore the supervisor's wage. To a level which is more consistent with the average of the comparable towns of Geneva, Victor, Farmington, Cortland, and Batavia. Which have an average of $68,407. So I'd like to ask for a second to this motion and a vote on the reduction of the budget line to $68,873. And returning that total to the tax lev, to remove it from the total tax levy at this time.
Before we move on, can I ask you a question, Chris? We had a motion on the table from our last meeting. What happened with that table? It has to be brought back. At this meeting, there isn't a specific order. It's not a pending motion as Adeline says.
Okay. So we have a first and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes. First thing I guess I would point out.
Mr. Casey, would you like to speak?
Yes. First thing I'd like to point out is that Pam Helling. Was a full-time supervisor at the time. When she was making that salary. And the position now. Is as drafted and as in our code. Only requires part-time effort. And I guess referring to Kathy Menakats. She mentioned at our last meeting. That the supervisor was the top elected position in the town. Not quite certain what that means, but I'll go into elaborating in a second. And then I want to say two meetings ago, and it might have been the last meeting, the supervisor said that. You know, he was involved in the revaluation process for the assessments. And one I don't think he should have been.
I did not say that.
And two, you said.
Point of order. That was not stated.
If the buck stops with me, I want to be involved. I don't understand how the daily activities of the supervisor differ than any of them. Us, the other four members of the board, other than. He is the liaison with the county, which he gets compensated by the county for. He is the budget director. And he has delegated many of those, if not all of those responsibilities to the budget officer. And he administers the meetings. Unfortunately, our supervisor has operationally gotten involved with many things. That he probably shouldn't be involved with. One is the town agendas for the meetings. That's specifically identified as one of our town manager roles and responsibilities. On every newsletter and bulletin for meetings that we have. Jared is inviting people to contact him, which again is a responsibility of the town manager. He got involved with the hazmat plant. And again, that is a town manager and operational requirement and responsibility. And most recently, it just came to our attention that he went out and got involved with the town snow plumbing contract with the county. So my estimation is that the supervisor is creating work because he wants to be involved.
Mr. Nadler, can I make, can I make a point of order? Who assigns, who assigns the contracts for the snow phone? The town supervisor and.
I have not, I have not read that email yet. I'm happy to look into it.
Mr. Fletcher, did you sign that contract?
I have to sign it first.
The town supervisor has to sign it and the highway superintendent has to sign it. So by law, Mr. Casey. By law and county, that is the way it works.
You could frame that, question it however you want, Mr. Supervisor. All contracts and all expenditures come before the town board for approval. And if you want to pick out one operational thing that you think you might have a clarification for to justify your involvement with the town operations. I would just refer you to the town manager's contract. And I dare say you're putting this town at jeopardy for violating that contract and being in breach of that contract. So my point is more, I think you're creating work because you want to be involved. Not because the town code requires you to be involved. Actually, the way the town contract with our town manager is drawn up. It minimizes your needs to be hand on, hands on with any of our operational affairs. The town board is the entity where the buck stops. And it's. No, no, now wait till.
No, right now we're discussing my motion.
I have an opportunity.
It's not about the motion on the table.
Point of order. John, this, you, you've taken a, I know you like to talk and you like people to hear you and it's okay. And it's okay. It's okay. Because I know it's, we, we love to hear you. You have a nice voice. It's very soothing. You've got about, let's take about a minute and wrap up. Then I'd like to have Terry be heard and then Adeline be heard. I have a question too. Is there somewhere in the town?
Let me finish. Let me finish. Please.
So you have a minute.
So I, I, I think that you're creating work because you want to be involved, not because you have to be involved. And unfortunately, this is creating quite a tenuous situation here at town hall. Believe it or not, I've had a few people from town hall approach me to tell you, tell me how tenuous a situation this is. So in conclusion, I don't think we should be asking our community. To pay tax dollars for a position that you want to have and a responsibility you want to have. I think we ought to be asking the taxpayers to spend money for what you should be doing and what the town recognizes you to be doing. I agree. Many people do in our community.
Is that it? Do you still have twenty four seconds if you want to fill? Sure?
You don't, you can't hear me or?
No, I, you mumbled, so I didn't hear you. All right.
I mumbled, sir?
My turn?
Mr. Mr. Finley.
Are you going to impose a time limit on me? I'd like to know if that is.
Per capita, you're, you're low.
We have talked for hours about this. We have talked about this, grasping for more authority since January of this year. First one was a budget officer and now it's this, wanting to be a full time supervisor, which. The job is being done. I don't think the job warrants somebody being full time. When we created this form of governance in two nine, two thousand seventeen. The whole idea was that it would be with somebody serving in a part time role. And with the day to day operations being supervised and delegated to the town manager. The previous supervisor seemed to have no problem with that, served four years under those offices. I don't remember any complaints, any man like to be brought up.
Which supervisor?
You can't remember who was the supervisor?
I don't remember who served, no supervisor.
Kathy something. She didn't complain about this, Jared. This whole thing is because. You don't want to be in that school system for some reason that we don't know. You want to be a full time supervisor here. And let's just put the elephant in the room right out on the table. There's an element in this town, I think represented on this board also, that does not like the town manager position. Would love to see it gone. I have heard that from people. I've heard people voted. That is what is at the core of this. I don't think that for this increase of forty some thousand dollars, we're going to get a penny's worth of. Contribution to the greater benefit of this town. I have yet to hear what the responsibilities are going to be. What are you going to do for the extra forty some thousand dollars? That's not out there at all. It, it just baffles me. Well, it doesn't baffle me. I think I know what's at work. I want, definitely work. I want this for whatever reason. And I will not support this at all. And anybody that does support this, especially if they're running for office this year, really ought to take that into consideration. I've said a lot in the past too. I'm done. Hopefully you heard me.
That was only a minute fifty six.
I have a question. Can I ask a question? Okay, good. Thank you. Is there somewhere in the town code that says the supervisor or the town board are part time positions? No. So when we elect a supervisor, we elect him to be a supervisor. It doesn't say part time, full time. So when we're elected on town board, it doesn't say part time, full time. It says town board. So people that say we're electing a full time supervisor or part time supervisor are just factually incorrect for our, for our town code. Ralph?
I, I would just go back to my original resolution of reducing the salary about twenty five thousand dollars from the budget asked to sixty eight thousand eight hundred and seventy three dollars. And the reasoning for that is that our supervisors, and I did hear this from Supervisor Metacott's. Put in approximately full time hours, as is our current supervisor still putting in full time hours. It probably wouldn't warrant full time hours if our town were running smoothly, which does not appear to be doing at this point. So I feel that we are, excuse me, I feel that we warrant that sixty eight thousand four hundred and seven. For the sixty eight thousand seven, eight hundred and seventy three dollar salary for a supervisor, which is very close to the average for comparable towns in our area. And restores something that I feel was not in following the spirit of the law in two thousand seventeen.
I, I agree with that lineup with that. I think that what happened in two thousand seventeen kind of circumvented the spirit of sending that out for referendum salary. And I agree with Mr. Nadler that it's perfectly legal, which is what happened. But I agree with, with Adeline is that the spirit of that was not followed.
So to a couple of points here. You made a comment, Adeline, that the town is not running smoothly.
Have you seen smooth learning in the last three months of the state?
I beg to differ. I think the town is running very smoothly. I think we haven't had any increases to our property taxes since Doug's been in office, or we've had minimal. I think we've got a functioning staff that is running very smoothly. And I think this was set up this way so that there would be no turnover at the management level. And this contract was set up so there was no turnover. It's been mentioned to me that the two prior supervisors both left early. And I think this town management form of government, manager form of government was set up to address that. So we, we disagree that whether it's running smoothly or not.
Both of those supervisors left early after the town.
Excuse me, let me finish, please. You also mentioned that the average for the other towns, the town man, for the town supervisor was more than what we're paying. But I think most of the towns that you talked about do not have a town manager. And more importantly, Dave, to your point. It doesn't say whether it's full time or part time in our code for the town manager or the town supervisor. I agree completely. And that's the part that frightens me. Because the town supervisor could go back to fulfilling only those responsibilities. That he's responsible for filling per our town code, which I again want to articulate. The day to day activities are to be the budget director, which most of those responsibilities have been delegated. He's a liaison with the county, which he gets paid and spent about twenty thousand dollars for. And he administers these town board meetings. So in essence, he could go back to doing that on a very part time basis, make sixty eight thousand dollars from the town. Make an additional twenty thousand dollars from the county and continue to work full time in another position. That's a hell of a sweet deal. And I bet you can count on a hell of a lot of people running against Jared come two thousand twenty five for that type of sweet deal. So I think it's a bad, bad decision and you know my vote on that.
All right. Thank you. Terry, you have another comment?
Yeah, I, I probably. Speaking into degrees here, but I don't see how this is more of it at all. I think the job of supervisor being done now, being done well, there's nothing that we're lacking. I couldn't disagree more with you, Adeline.
Excuse me, I'm going to suggest that we go into executive session. Sorry to interrupt you, Terry. Can I ask for a request of motion?
Second, all in favor? I, John. Okay, we have returned to our regular, our regular meeting. There is a motion on the table.
Motion to reduce the supervisor's salary from ninety four thousand to sixty eight thousand eight hundred and seventy three. And return the excess amount to reduce the total tax levy on the taxpayers. And I believe Dave seconded that.
Yes, correct. All in favor? Opposed? No.
Yeah, I'm opposed.
So three and two. Kerry's?
You were A A. Just for clarification.
Yes. Oh, I also would like to make a motion the, the other day when we cut the fireworks budget to thirty, from thirty thousand to fifteen thousand. We put that fifteen thousand into the contingency fund, the contingency portion of the budget. I would like to make a motion that we take that fifteen thousand and we remove it from the budget altogether, lowering the tax levy.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Kerry, just a vote count? Five zero, okay. So then that will reduce. Fifteen thousand from contingency to. Out of the budget. All right, resolution number two sixty, creation of a capital project for the North Road Street.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry's, resolution two sixty one, creation of a capital project and budget for town hall renovation. I'll second that. Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry's? This one does not have a number, so we will call this one two six two. I grabbed one to the table when I came in. So dental? The dental, resolution two sixty two for the twenty twenty four dental care program selection. Moved in second. Any discussion?
Doug, did we look into the pricing structure and compare and this was the best we could probably get, I'm assuming? Thank you.
Eligible for the. The, the, any employee, any employee are eligible for the voluntary programs. So that includes part time employees, full time employees, but it's not a percent there.
A hundred percent, this says that it's, they pay twenty five percent of the total plan? That would be for part time. Part time would pay, any non full time, non F T E would pay a hundred percent of, would, would. Yeah, it does not have that option. So it's a benefit to the, the full time. How close are we to the consortium to be able to join into that?
It's, I believe the requirement is fifty full time equivalents. And I know from what I've seen up today, there's eighty five employees currently. But it doesn't all translate over to fifty F T E's.
Okay, so are we? Okay.
What's the consortium?
Uh, multiple towns are involved in the consortium and it could. I, if the larger you are, the more employees you have, you're eligible to join into an insurance consortium, which allows you to get a better rate. All in favor? All right. Is there any other business to come before the board at this time? Yes, sir.
The motions, it sounds like we're taking, from the two motions that I heard here today, we're going to be. Reducing the tax levy by forty thousand one hundred and twenty seven dollars. That's the twenty one twenty seven plus the fifteen. I think that's forty.
Forty thousand one hundred and twenty seven?
Yeah. I'll do the calculations for you exactly. It looks like it's about a ten, maybe two pence in the tax rate, but I'll do the exact calculations for you.
Okay.
For when we get ready to adopt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
When are we going to adapt?
Uh, we can decide, we can set another meeting or we can.
I'd rather do it at our next town board meeting.
It's the last day, right?
It is.
Yep. Be better to do that before, maybe even before the election.
So any other?
I feel we've had a number of special meetings this month. I'm running out of available space on my calendar. I'd rather just do it at the next scheduled town board meeting this one.
Is there anything, is there anything else that needs to be modified on the budget?
I do not, if you have Jim Fletcher, say yes.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we pass the budget as currently amended.
Second.
To pass it right now?
Pass it right now.
Can you? Do we have, we might have to do it by resolution because they have, yeah. Sure. Because I think it has to list everything in it.
It, it does. And I do have a resolution prepared, although I would have to input all the changes you just made.
Can you change it on the fly? Do the, the two people that we have here, are you okay if we change it on the fly?
I think I'm fine with this, but I.
There's more than two people online.
They're in comfortable chairs.
Sure.
There's equipment that I've asked for, some are small, some are big. And I know you've asked for a reduction overall, which I think. So we'll go through that entire procedure of. Once that will say, people will use that and defund this pretty small.
What's the total, do you know?
What's the total, do you know?
Twenty-nine thousand worth of. It's not huge, but. Consideration. Yeah, actually.
Can, is there enough Ed Norman's issue to do that?
So your thing.
I, I just tried to, you know, think out laws.
That's what we're doing. So your question is, take that forty thousand one twenty-seven?
Because like there was a piece of equipment, like. It's spoken, called the parts about. Through a trading of real excavator.
Right.
Towards our team, and with the real excavators, so we'll be able to pay them all here, but. I'm just looking for.
Keep up with the capital, or part of our capital improvement plan.
It becomes more of an issue then, it's worth.
Let's see what they bring up, and then we'll.
Need the resolution.
Still discuss.
Yeah.
We need a resolution, or it can't be made by motion.
I've almost got most of the stuff on screen there.
There's the word resolution, I'm assuming it's up there. It's north.
It says where it is. It was two sixty-two.
Somebody might look up the supervisor to help one, just so I can.
I don't have it in front of me.
Here. I know, I did make it smaller because I couldn't handle the giant things.
Do you have other revisions? Didn't we also, Doug, just delete the remaining balance from fireworks?
No, no.
Fifteen thousand.
We were at contingency. Else, it was half of it, roughly, that was going to go back into a contingency budget, but we did, we should have eliminated the fifteen thousand we put as a tax decrease.
Okay, supervisor elected, Doug, you need the number? Uh, eight, eight, one hundred, one, two, two, zero, one, one, zero, and then dot, five zeros.
After he does all that, he's not here, Jim's question.
Jim wasn't going to get his way.
We can make a budget adjustment too for that, if it's not quite ready.
So just so everybody knows on that, and I think I already referred this to the resolution, so Jim and I met, um, and Terry ended up joining us. You start talking about capital plan, and I'm making other comments, I can come November ninth to do that. There's, there's a lot of things we need to discuss, and so. You're a hundred percent, always feel that when you're just. Okay. Let me share my screen since there's so many folks and. You can go through this, so this would be. And I'll share, it'll be on the other screen. Over there, so, um, so it'd be resolution. Two six three.
Two six three.
So, um. Workshops, so it's the second we're asked here, and I need that.
October, right?
Okay, so, but these are all the changes that you've made to the preliminary budget, so starting here with the first line, the town board, now this is each member times five. So that's the total, so this is actually, we have to do these in. Groups, basically.
So the town board is divided by four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Real quick before you get done, with the September and October and all those, you need to add October sixteenth as well.
October eleventh.
Yep.
October eleventh, we had a special budget workshop.
October sixteen, and eleven, and twenty-third.
So your, your town board members here, that's this total line, eight, eight, one hundred, ten, ten. Uh, one ten would be twenty-two thousand seven ninety-two after the reduction. Town justices, fifty-seven thousand two eighteen after the reduction, that's the right of I two. Supervisor confidential secretary, a dollar after the reduction. Supervisor salary sixty-eight, eight, seven, three after the reduction. Now clerk, deputy clerk three, increase to forty-seven, one thirty-three. Celebrations, fireworks, keep in mind, there's other things in this line, that's why it's more than fifteen thousand, that line also includes special estimate. And so that fifteen thousand for fireworks, we just took that back out just right now, lowering the contingency to one, four, four, four oh nine. The tax levy goes from five, eight, five. Five, four, five, five hundred eighty-five thousand for the general fund to five hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. And that computes to a, what looks like, just based on quick math here, on the Excel spreadsheet, is seventy-six cents per thousand. The only thing I don't know about that, if that's a rounding, it might be seventy-seven, just the way it sounds, I gotta, I just have to.
Thank you.
Can people online hear you at all?
Oh, it should be. Looks like on the transcriptions, this, uh.
You're picking up?
I'm trying to speak loud, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the next change here, this was the Canada River Farmington Water District, so this lowered the, um, contractual obligation to two, eight, five, two, eight, eight. So that was a difference of one thousand, um, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. And I think what we had agreed to was putting that into the fund balance of that district, so that's what nineteen eighty-one will do, is it'll roll over into fund balance.
Correct.
The next one is Canada River Consolidator, uh, Water District, and as you know, we had those conversations about taking up one hundred and ninety-four thousand. So what this does is it actually does a couple things, it reduces the line from one hundred and ninety-four thousand to one dollar. Increases the water capital projects from zero to a hundred thousand, we put a hundred thousand there, that's for things like the water meters and those types of things. And then we reduce the tax levy, should be by ninety-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And so then that over that tax levy there, uh, so.
Do you need to change the tax levy number there?
I am going to have to change the tax levy now, because we just changed the levy on that by forty thousand one twenty-seven.
Aren't we all glad we have calculators on our phones now, it's awesome.
We need an abacus otherwise.
An abacus. I don't think I could use an abacus, or a slide rule. Terry, do you know how to use a slide rule? Do you know how to use a slide rule?
Still got one.
You do? My dad used one.
An abacus? I have.
Slide rule's a little different.
I can remember when I was a senior in college. Second semester, taking final exam, heat theory, one of the courses. And there were sixty of us in the engineering class. One guy came from the family, had a few boxes. First T I calculator. Everybody else getting like this, and he's already gone like this. He finished before the.
All right, so the control of tax levy limit doesn't change, but the other two numbers here in this paragraph change, so the total tax levy would be four point five million. Uh, in the elderly would be five hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-seven, meaning this budget is not tax cap compliant.
And yet again, that's due to our special districts.
But yeah, then you have the general fund that just reduced that, right, forty thousand one twenty-seven, it should now be five point one million. For total budget, not including capital projects, obviously, they don't have to be part of the budget, a fourteen point three million. We advertised the supervisor's salary for twenty-four, sixty-eight thousand eight seventy-three. There you go.
So if somebody wanted to remove, John, if you have to remove.
Yeah, John, do you want to?
Resolution two.
Is that the right number?
Modify it?
Yeah.
That, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three.
Two sixty-three.
Two sixty-three.
Two.
Two sixty-three.
Can't read that for a while.
I will second the motion. Again.
And we have a moment, you can pick between Terry or Adeline, did you get Adeline again? Okay, move, any further, just, I'm not going to ask that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so four to one. The budget carries.
All right, wait, did you vote A, did you vote aye or nay on the budget?
I vote nay on the budget, no.
Thank you.
Dave's my vote, nay. Put me down.
Nay?
Put me down, no.
Three to two.
What are we saying?
Hey, anybody? Final, that's your final offer. Uh, we do not have any other business at this time, we do have a final privilege of the floor. There's anyone who would like to be heard?
I think Linda may have raised her hand, but I'm not sure.
Linda, did you have your hand up? Okay, go ahead.
So I, I heard Adeline say, uh, she wanted a public vote six years ago, and I also thought, why not have one now then? If we're making a significant change, because I think more townspeople recognize that we have a manager. Uh, that's the person doing a lot of the work. Um, and so I feel like it's a change that most of the people in the town aren't aware is happening. And then the other thing is, despite you guys all being on the board for a bunch of times, some of you off and on, and some of you rather new. So many questions are answered by the town manager, so I have a hard time understanding, uh, where the gaps are in what we're doing. And I just wanted to say those things, even though I know you already voted, you still have the opportunity in January to. Set the salary back where it was, I mean, one more chance to do the right thing for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I would just like to make a comment, um, in relation to, um, former councilwoman Dorset's comments. Are you sure? Um, that, uh, at no point in, has this budget, uh, done anything to change the town manager position. Um, I think we are still in support of our town manager position at this point, and that did not change.
All right, any further, I see Kathy.
Hey, that.
Hold on, there you go, start over again, you're unmuted now.
Okay, um, I'm Kathy Rayburn, I live on Westlake. Um, I just cannot believe that Jared, you and two of the board members just voted you a raise. At middle, in the middle of your term. Essentially, two years into your term, you get a significant raise. And I find it unconscionable that you've participated in this, it's wrong, shouldn't have happened. That's all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Do we have anybody on the other screen? I think we only have two screens, right, or a screen and a half? All right, I'm trying to browse too, I don't see any hands. Okay. We have one person, one of our two, we have fifty percent of our audience in the town hall would like to speak.
Ivan Chavez, Middle Cheshire Road. To the experienced eye, uh, we pick up that most of this has been a political hit job. But aside from that, um, I was thinking about the last few meetings that, that I've been at. There have been innuendos, there's been name-calling, attempted character assassination, today unfair assumptions being made. And worst of all, bullying, everything we tell our kids not to do. I want to thank the people on the board who sat quietly through all of that and did not respond in kind, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, if there's no one else would like to be heard at this time. We do, do not have any executive sessions, we burned up our executive session during the middle of the program. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm meeting adjourned, thank you everyone.